All right.
Amen.
Go ahead Minister Isaiah.
Amen.
Well praise the Lord everybody on tonight.
Good evening everybody this is Minister Isaiah Robinson I'll be facility on tonight. We're gonna give you some spiritual listening music mine but at the moment just set the mood spiritually amen. And I'm not the protector of this recording or this music that we're about to hear amen.
Amen praise God.
Hey Sister Dana.
Hi hi how are you? It's been a long time I miss your brother Isaiah. I've been here it's just it's been crazy hectic with.
It's into your hands Minister Isaiah.
Amen thank you Apostle.
Amen praise God.
Let's go off to prayer please. Dear Lord Father God, a great creator of the universe. Father I come to you today Father God I could for your wisdom your understanding of your grace and your love. I come to you as always Father God that I could say something that touches hearts and minds Father God. Give them understanding Father God that you are the one that you are the leader that you are the love Father God. The all great things and all mercy comes through you Father God. Father God so on the night Father God actually be with this ministry Father God soldier on fire for Christ Father God. That we continue to lead people Father God into your hands Father God. Actually be with our pastor Teresa Father God as she goes through her health problems Father God that you continue to touch her as she heals Father God and she continue to be with you Father God. Continue to spread your word Father God. The powerful soldier she is Father God. Father God I ask you to be with Elder Burr Father God. A true soldier Father God a man who has true passions for you Father God. That you continue to touch him that he deliver your word by God with the passion that he carries with him Father God. Actually to strengthen that passion even more of a notch Father God so you can spill out more of your love Father God. More of your praises Father God more of your teachings Father God. Actually just be with him in himself Lord. And as you do this class Father God that he gets up in this understanding that he can spread some of your wisdom Father God that they come through his mouth Father God. So actually touch his lips on the night Father God also Father God see to deliver the words through him Father God. Father God actually be with Elder Mark you Father God. As he joins us Father God that powerful brother that powerful soldier you Father God that you continue to strengthen him and rise him up Father God. As one of your leaders Father God continue to uplift him and strengthen him Father God as he spreads your gospel Father God. As he leads your sheep Father God as he walk with us on the soldiers of fire for Christ Father God actually continue to strengthen this young man and uplift him Father God. Let him know everything ain't gonna be alright Father God I can feel the spirit now Father God as it grows and gets stronger Father God. A mighty warrior soldier you have in your Father God so actually continue to be with him Father God. Father God actually be with Pastor Minister Rose Jackson Father God. A prayer from prayer warrior Father God and actually just continue to be with her. As she goes through this leadership Father God that she helped lead the way Father God into a new journey soldier of fire for Christ Father God. That you continue to be with her as she be there strong for our family members Father God. And as she try to teach others Father God on those late night phone call Father God that she did that she pray for others Father God so I actually. See to be with her as she do the work she has to do Father God. Father God Apostle Robin once again Father God actually has to be with this strong leader. As she handles a lot of things Father God but she feels so passionate about you Lord. As she step up her game and come to your name Father God. As she used to be with her Father God and her family continue to strengthen her Father God as she helps strengthen the rest of us Father God. Let it be the mother the mother leader that she is Father God. The kind heart she showed Father God but also that power warrior she has in her Father God so actually continue to be with her Lord. And we can fight through this ministry and we continue to do your work Father God. Your Father God on tonight I ask you to be with us as I preach these notes Father God preach these words Father God and read these scriptures Father God. That'd be pleasing to the people that listens to us Father God that it touch each and every one of their hearts Father God that it spreads out through social media Father God. That it warm and touch your heart and so we could spread our seeds Father God throughout social media that your name and your word could be spread out Father God. That we bring in more powerful men and women and Father God into your ministry Father God. Father God to do your work Father God. Father God we have so much work to do Father God we ask you Father God just continue to be with us Father God we ain't going to our daily struggle Father God. As you continue to uplift us Father God that we continue in your work Father God. I say all these in your son precious name Jesus Christ amen.
Amen. Minister Isaiah what seems to be your what seems to be your and Apostle Robbins. Problem in the spirit realm that y'all wanna rename people and give them new identities on the verse. I just wanna know just a lot here on social media out there between y'all two y'all been reading. Change people names and type. I don't know what y'all eating what y'all seeing especially Apostle Robin. I don't know what's going on over there. They wanna change their they wanna change their office. I'm just was curious I was like he can write crossfire someone's he can write give a new office. You gotta fix your.
I didn't know I was a day there's a pastor.
Yeah. You gave me fix it yeah fix it on screen.
Fix it on the screen.
Yeah you forgot to put a minister. Only social media so we know who's instructing that's why we talk well I. I know who instructing amen.
Wait a minute.
Me I was just curious I'm your Apostle why I know what y'all talking in the spirit realm what y'all talking about changing people. Don't change minds don't put that out in the atmosphere don't change minds don't give me no action.
Messing up right now cuz I'm on this laptop I just introduced myself as Minister Isaiah Rob. Try to mess it up amen.
That's alright I understand take it away.
May God's will be done.
That's right. Hi Sister Lauren hi to babies oh I'm sorry.
Let me introduce myself I'm Minister Isaiah Robinson. My topic is rich and wealth. My scripture readings are day five got the five one and six first Timothy chapter six. Verses six and through ten and verses seventeen through nineteen. But beware rich can lead to pride and arrogance. Proverbs thirty chapter thirty and verse nine least have you fool deny thee say who is the law or least I be denied. And thee and say who is the law at least I pull out I pull still excuse me. I put still and take my name in vain. Proverbs twenty eight twenty seven whoever gives to the poor will not want. Be who hides his eyes will get many a curse. But amen for that excuse me for that. But the question the subject on today is. Rich and wealth. How do we handle our riches and wealth? And um let me read from James James five one and six elder. James said James criticized the wealthy described how their wealth can lead to sin. Have so much wealth that it goes to waste is a sin. So the question is today brothers sisters is how do we deal with wealth and riches? What do we gain for wealth and riches? And how would you lose sometimes being being rich and having success and wealth does it always make you happy? I had experience this weekend where I was at at some friend's house and I seen all the beautiful things they had. In the houses and cars and things but all I heard was complaint. Some of the things I wished I had but I didn't see no a lot of times I didn't see no happiness I just seen complaints complaints in um. Aching heart. So I'm just planting that out there brothers sisters that um sometime we could be rich and we could crave for all these riches and still be poor at heart. We can our spirit. So my question on you today brothers and sisters where are you or how do rid our riches? Our wealth having wealth how have you made us happy and how did it made us feel bad? Before I even go to scripture I wanna see if somebody has to answer this and give me some situation in their lives. That when they had money in the times they didn't have and. Where we might put them at in their lives be it with family or friends loved ones. How has the effect of having something and not having and having anything be it rich your riches and your wealth? How has it affect you in your daily lives at points of your life I feel like sure there points in each one of our lives where we were doing pretty good. Even if it was a short period of time and and that a lot of those times where then we sit back you say you know what? I I had fun I did these little things but I truly wasn't happy. So how's that having riches being richer richer how does that affect us in our lives? That's my first question before I even go into scripture readings so I just want y'all to feed on that amen. So net so we'll go to while you feeding on that. I want somebody to get some sort of scripture readings from scripture I want gem I read um. I did James five one and six I need to read it for the first Timothy's chapter six verses six through ten. And seventeen nineteen. That's first Timothy chapter six verses six through ten and seventeen through nineteen. Okay Elder Burr. Come off mute too. Y'all mute okay.
First Timothy. Six right?
Yes.
And uh six through ten?
Yes.
Okay I'm reading from the Amplified okay? I didn't put my hand down cuz I'm concentrating on the word for a minute.
Oh go ahead.
It says but godliness actually is a source of great gain when accompanied by contentment. That contentment which comes from the sense of inner confidence based on the significance of the significance of God. For we have brought nothing into the world so it is clear that we cannot take anything out either. But if we have food and clothing with these we will be content. But those who are not financially ethically and. Crave to get rich with a compulsive greedy longing for wealth fall into temptation and a trap. And into many foolish and harmful desires that plunge people into ruin and destruction leading personal misery. Amen.
Amen can you do seventeen and nineteen too please?
I forgot ten I forgot ten that's probably the. It says for the love of money that is the greedy desire for it and the willingness to gain it. And ethically is a root of all sorts of evil. And some by longing for it have wandered away from the faith and pierced themselves through. And through with many sorrows that's very important I'm glad we saw that one thank you. Somebody the other one.
Yeah seventeen to nineteen seventeen to nineteen.
Yeah and somebody else.
I'll read seventeen through nineteen amen. Charge them that are rich in this world that they do not eye minded nor trust in uncertain riches. But in a in a living God forgive us riches all things to joy. That they do good that they be rich in good work. Ready to distribute tribute willing to communicate laying up stores for themselves a good foundation against the time to come. That they may lay hold on eternal life. Amen amen. Now. Can anybody ask me to they got another reading um who's that?
I have it the King James Version.
Okay amen go ahead.
Okay. It says now godliness with contentment is great gain. For we brought nothing into this world and it is certain we can carry nothing out. And having food and clothing with these we shall be content. For those who desire to be rich fall into temptation and a snare. And into many foolish and harmful lusts which drawn men in destruction and perdition. For the love of money is a root of all kinds of evil. For which some have strayed from the faith in their greediness and pierced themselves through with many sorrows. And then seventeen through nineteen says. Command those who are rich in this present age not to be haughty nor to trust in uncertain riches. But in the living God who gives us richly all things to enjoy. Let them do good that they be rich in good works ready to to give willing to share. And nineteen says storing up for themselves a good foundation for the time to come. That they may lay hold on eternal life amen to the readers here is endorsed of his holy and righteous word amen.
So what do we get what we take out of this here? We start we tend to store up riches personal riches selfish riches. But we forget about the riches of our soul. We 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 forget about storing up in our storehouse for each other to be helpful of each other. And so we we have all this money and different things in our pockets but we 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 pour in our hearts. We pour in our hearts we have no strength in the heart you actually you are rich in financial riches but you actually actually in life. We've got you stable in spirit. So what he's when it says scripture tells you about um because I'm not taking anything with you. And death. We gotta be mindful that the true riches come from God. He gives us our strength he give us a way out of our sins our temptations. That's your true riches and not the earthly riches that we could be tucking away by worms or taken away by families when you die. So. We just gotta understand family that true riches come from God. That little temporary wishes we get on earth even though we have moments of joy man we also got we gotta worry about other people wanting what we have. We got other people worry about people stealing what we have. So had being richer on earth doesn't give you no glory give you temporary give you temporary joy but you always going you always going through suffering cuz. When you're rich most time when we have money rich we we don't we have trust issues too. So that's what that's one of the things pains we go through. While we call ourselves having money and being rich and joy but like I said most people I I know even myself. When I had times where I really had money I always said. Issues in life with family friends I felt used. And sometimes I realized the pain I was going through that there you know with that cuz I knew nobody loved me he only loved me cuz I had with the gift to them. But sometimes that 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 um the richie can put a false sense of security to you. And in reality you just you're broken. Amen so I need um anybody got any comments on that before I move on to something else? Elder Burr again.
Yeah I'd like to say something about that if I can please. You know in the world in the world without God. We easily want riches that quick we we go crazy we go in debt. Because we you know we don't really care we want what we want and we're gonna get it no matter what. And being in the world and the word of God are completely different. Because the word of God leads us the right direction. Thank God for programs and and things that we have in class like this to realize that word of God. Is so powerful and so true and it'll give us life if we follow it. But in the world yes I lost a lot of money I used people I had all kinds of stuff. But when I'm in Christ I give with the heart of of you know I give gold away. You know because of the love of Christ what he gave me amen praise God.
Amen amen thank you um Elder Burr.
God bless God bless um. I just wanted to say the thing about being rich is the people that are rich they usually think they're superior to other people. Because they so used to giving what they want because they able to pay for it. But when it comes to to salvation and and coming to live a life with Christ you can't pay for this. This the only the only way that it can be paid was paid on the cross in full through Jesus Christ. And the problem with that is a lot of arrogance. They are so arrogant because of they they feel like. They superior cuz God has blessed them but a lot of times. How did you get your riches? That's the problem right there a lot of people they. They will step on your neck to get to their riches and they step on people and put people down and 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 even Robin still. To get what they want you know we have people that have embezzled money. Lot money laundry and all this kinda stuff be going on to get their riches so. That because their God is that money. But that's why it's so hard for them to get into the kingdom of God because just like when um. What was the rich man came to Jesus by night and he told him to sell all his goods? And give it to the poor and he turned around and left with his head hung down cuz he was sad cuz he didn't wanna do that. Man is not gonna give up their money but in. But in order for you to become a child of God and enter into the kingdom of heaven, you only can serve one God, only one master. You eat, you can't love God and master and, and that mammal, that money, that dollar. You got to give up that dollar bill as your God. And that's most of the time, that's the problem. That's why the Bible tells us it's hard for a rich man to get into the kingdom of God. They have to first humble themselves and submit to God in his word. And they don't want to do that because they don't want to give up what they got, that money, that mighty dollar.
Thank you, um, Minister, um, I think I see Jesse Elder Marshall here, Elder, uh, Marshall.
God bless. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
God bless, God bless. Only thing I want to say about this, uh, God wants us to prosper in all areas in our lives. He wants us to prosper. He wants us to have good things. He wants us to be able to enjoy life here on earth with, with things. But the thing is, we can't put those things before God. That's, that's what, that's what, that's what it says, the love of money. Once you start loving the things instead of being appreciative of the things and, 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 and giving God glory, we become, we, we allow those things become as Minister Rose just said, our idols. They become our gods. That's why I say you can't serve two. You, you already gonna be able to serve one. So I just wanted to say, God wanted us to have good days, but we just can't make them things our priorities or the love of those things to, to get us disconnected from God. That's all I wanted to say.
Amen. Amen. I actually myself, when I was doing well financially, I knew, I knew of God, but I didn't, but I didn't follow that God, the God of Christ. I followed that spiritual money, that, that, um, the God of the dollar, that poison. I call it poison. Money can be poisonous and it can be sinister. It can have you do bad things and make you hurt people. And, um, that's what money kind of did to me, even though I was being used. I also use people too, so I'm not gonna say that just because I had the money that somebody always used me. I took for granted the money I had. The times I was having it with people that I didn't treat fairly. You know, and so like I said, um, I was worshiping that dollar bill. You know, and but thank to God, you know, when I took, I finally had that crash and I lost all those things, I wandered in the mud for a while and as I came up with a better spirit because I don't have what I used to have, but I found God. So he gave me the riches within. And I look around, I see the things I don't have. It doesn't really bother me no more because I, I feel so much better now. If God blessed me with more, that's fine. If he keep me where I'm at with the blessings he give me, I'm fine too. Because I, like I said, I, I feel better now through Christ than I did when I was worshiping that dollar bill. So those are the personalities traits I had. I was, I was always, I was, at the beginning, I was saying like a woke me situation where people just used me, but I, Isaiah, Minister Robinson, Isaiah Robinson had his ways too. I've been using, I took advantage of people too when I had these things. And so I thank God for the, for the, for the power that I had. You know, it was a rough fall, but he taught me a lesson. He made, he made me appreciate him. Amen. Elder Bud, your hand still up? You have something else to say?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, when Minister Rose was talking about, you know, you know, a man had to give away all he had because he was rich. And the, you know, richness is not, well, what I'm trying to say is, you know, Jesus said, it's easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than a rich man to make it into heaven, the kingdom. And the reason why I said that is because a lot of people don't know that what was going on in that time. A camel, uh, the, the eye of the needle was an archway. That when a camel was loaded up with everything on it, it had to be, get on its knees and be unloaded before it could go through the eye of the needle. And I wanted to share that because that's when Jesus was saying, it's easier for, you know, a camel to go through the eye of the needle than a rich man to enter the kingdom.
Man, thank you, um, Elder Bud. That's made me think about when God, I think it was Sal, he made king. And, um, he gave him back everything, but it, it, greater arrogance got in the way. His mind got poisoned with greed. So quickly, what does God give you, he could quickly take it away from you. So that's another thing with, with, with being rich and greed is not when you, when God give us things and then we forget who he is. And he, and God know how to take it back away from you. So that's another danger of, of the riches we receive. You know, we can see riches, well riches, but we all, God also give us riches. But when we give what the riches God give us, because he can easily just snatch it away from us. Amen. Anybody else before I move on? Oh, good. That's Sister Goodwonder. I pronounced your name, Wonderful.
That's Sister Lauren.
Okay, um, come off mute now.
Yeah, amen. I agree. And there's also that Bible scripture that says it's better to give than to receive. And I feel like, uh, a lot of times in my life when I have given, um, I also get that, get that feeling in my head like, okay, do I trust? Do I trust where this money is going for sure? Because a, a lot of my foreign, I have some foreign friends that I've known for a long time. And the enemy sometimes puts in, puts, tries to give me those thoughts of like, no, don't give to them. You know, they're, they're not really your, your brothers and sisters in Christ and stuff like that. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there.
No, that's fine. That's great. Because, um, when we, when we giving sometimes, there's, there was times, now it's been pretty much a giver a lot of ways, but there's times I didn't give. Not because I didn't have, but I had those selfish moments. I ain't giving up my money. I ain't giving this, that, you know, and you see, you see people that, that's in need. Sometimes in this flesh, we can't all have some kind of selfish ways that we, we think if I get this person, did this person thing, I appreciate it. We, we, there was some other demons that we faced and fight, you know, um, when we have, we, we have money. And even though we had the money to give and share, we, there was some other demons in us that we fight. We just don't want to let loose, uh, give it up. We'll keep that tight fist with it. Amen. So let me just go through some questions then. I'm gonna go through some of the questions I never did the last class. I'm gonna go, have anybody noticed a change in someone you would know once they got financing blessing? Have any, have you know any changes in some of the people we knew that once they got money and they changed, they financially blessed? Apostle Robin?
Amen. Praise the Lord, everybody. I think I had mentioned this once before about, um, a few people that I've known, um, got money and they so quickly changed, you know? Um, they blessed certain people, but then others that blessed them, they forgot all about them, you know? And this kind of turned their nose up at them, you know, so it was kind of, for me, it was a hurtful thing. But I guess when we, we're givers, we should never, you know, we, uh, expect anything back in return anyway. You know, so that's kind of how I look at that, you know, but it was a hurtful thing to see that person, you know, just act a certain way, you know? So, but, you know, people are people and sometime they get in their flesh, you know, when they receive a blessing. You know, we're supposed to be able to bless others, you know, I would, I myself, I like to be rich in the spirit, but um, even if I was blessed with a lot of money, I believe that I would give it all away, you know, because as givers, you know, we tend to do that, but we gotta use discernment, as I often say, with the giving. So, but that's what I wanted to share about that. Amen.
Yeah.
Amen.
Amen. Um, I, like, if you guys, that's a perfect word that you say, excuse me, uh, it's discernment, affirmment and giving, you know, you gotta take time just so instead of make a quick decision, I ain't giving this person none. You have to take the sermon, you know, you just gotta examine them, examine yourself, you know? It speaks to God. Is this, this time to give or to hold back? Um, I had friends, I think I told you a story about my friend who won the lottery for some millions of dollars. And he was like a brother to me. And actually people, I won't give out his name, but people were running around me, uh, what's your friend? What'd he buy you? What'd he give you? Did you get anything from him? But, um, my heart was always like, you know, that man ain't gonna give me nothing. God bless him. That's his money. But my flesh tells me, oh, that could have gave me something, you know? You know, but I see him all on news. I see him traveling and different things like that. And I see him, he asked me money, money since he won these riches. And, uh, so, yeah, I've been around people financially blessing. They finally forget about you and, um, but you know what? I didn't let it really bother me. That same man today is wandering in the streets of Newark now and I feel sorry for him. My son seen him and he asked about me. My son angry with me. I said, he gave the man my number. Um, I don't like what he did to his money and part of my flesh figured that he was, he was like brothers. He would look out for me, but, uh, I forgave and let that go by, but that's my experience. It's like getting something. This guy won millions of dollars. You know, and then two cents, I mean, he's my brother. We went to play Little League football together, baseball and with the camps together. We was inseparable. So I experienced that in a big way, but you know, I, I learned to forgive him when people bring him up who still angry at him. I said, when you, next time you see him, just give me my, give him my number. I'm not angry at all. But that's my personal experience with a situation like that. Amen. Um, Elder, um, Bud, you got your hand up again?
I, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I'd like to share something that you were sharing about that, about when we get riches. You know, it said in Deuteronomy, you know, it talks about that when you're eaten and full, then you shall bless the Lord your God for the good land which he has given you. You know, that is what we're to do. When we get blessed, he gives it us a lot of times so that we can help others out. Okay? And I, I praise God for that because there's where my heart is, you know? And it says, and then in Leviticus says, beware that you do not forget the Lord God by not keeping his commandments and his judgments and his statutes, which I've commanded you this day. So when you have eaten and you're full and you've built beautiful houses and dwell in them and when your herds and your flocks multiply and your silver and your gold is multiplied and all that you have is multiplied. When your heart is lifted up and you forget the Lord your God, who brought you out of the land of Egypt from the house of bondage. So never forget the Lord. Amen. God blesses us to help others that can't help themselves. Praise God.
Praise God. Amen. Thank you, Elder. Let's go through some scripture reading. Can I get a reader for Luke chapter twelve, verse five, Luke twelve, verse five?
Luke twelve, verse five?
Excuse me, um, Luke twelve fifteen. I'm sorry. Luke twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen, okay. All right. I have it.
Okay.
Luke, Luke twelve, chapter in the fifteen verse.
Yes.
The Amplified Version says, then he said to them, watch out and guard yourselves against e- every form of greed. For not even when we, not even when one has an overflowing abundance, does his life consist or nor it is derived from his possessions.
Amen. Amen. Can I get another scripture reading on that one? I have people on out. I got another reader on that one from a different version.
Amen. Let me pull it up. Luke, uh, twelve and fifteen. Amen. Praise God. And it says, and he said to them, take heed and beware of covetousness. For one's life does not consist in the abundance of the things he possesses. And that's the New King James Version. Amen.
Yeah, yeah. Mind of the things you cover because it's your life and not depend on the things you possess. That's what I take about it. But we gotta remember spiritually the things that we covered, the, the monies, the cars, the clothes. That's not worth anything in our life, but be mindful when we cover these things. Because like I go back before, you know, we can't take it with us. Be mindful because that's the danger of our lives, that's danger in our souls. We could lose our souls, lose with gods we war because we, because of our covetousness. We do in our, in our greedy ways. Amen. Anybody else got the, um, another reader on that one or somebody else got something else to say? Well, we'll move on.
We have Elder Bud saying up again, Minister.
My hand up too. You can't see my hand?
Okay, I was looking down. I'm trying to look at, look up something. Go ahead, Elder Bud.
Yeah, what I wanted to say according to that, you know, Jesus, this man came up to Jesus. I don't think this was mentioned yet. But he come up to Jesus and he said, you know, how do I, you know, what do I need to do to receive, you know, the kingdom? And he says, well, you know, I follow all the ten commandments down to the T. But he was a rich man. And so Jesus said, go and sell everything that you have and give it to the poor. And the Bible says, the man turned around and walked away sadly because he couldn't forfeit his right riches, even though he followed the commandments. It was right there in the book. But he couldn't do it. He, he riches got a hold of him.
Yeah. Is, is that the same like the story of the rich man's son who wanted all his money? And he went and robbed it away and he, and he come back calling back to his father?
No, that, one I was talking about.
That's a different story. I guess this story.
Oh, I thought you said, is it the same?
I was trying to put the comparison between the two stories.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's different.
Yes, different, yes. Different story. I say that because, uh, do all that boys riches and he wanted everything he wanted with selfishness and everything. And, and once he left and he had to swallow, eat with the pigs and stuff, you see what, where his riches took him to. Now he had to run back to his father, who was a spiritual man. So, so thank God he has somebody to run back to. But a lot of time we, we get selfish in that richnessness and want all these different things. Sometimes we fall, we don't have nobody but God to run to because we don't have family members or different things like that. Very few of them care. It's very few of them care, you know, and then if, um, in your fall that you was harmful to other people, then I even limit people even more to care. So you need God in your, you need God in your life to lift you up, you know, in the flesh, in the flesh of you down in the mud. Thank God he has someone in his life, a father, who was a, who was a good man, was a faithful man that was able to be there for him at, at all said and done. And I bring that, that, that took the story up because I think all of us that fell from the top ended up pretty much close to where that, where, where his son was, rich man's son was. We, we fell. We took deep dives, deep falls and thank God I had people to, to come to, but a lot of us didn't have nobody to come to at all. I mean, so I'm just saying that to say this, that we gotta put our faith in God and not in money. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Ministers, Isaiah, don't forget, um, Minister Rose. She got her hand up.
Go ahead, Minister Rose. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, um, I just wanted to, um, to, to, you know, let us know that we have to be careful because sometimes we don't even realize when we borderline on greed. So many people have so much greed and don't even realize that that's what's going on with them, with themselves. And a lot of people say, oh, yes, they do. No, I've seen somebody that don't, they thought that they were just going along just fine and dandy with the Lord and the Lord was pleased with them, but they were so full of greed. They were so full of greed that they was trying to get all they can to build, just like the, the story in the Bible. It, it, it looked underneath what we just got to reading in the twelve chapters. How the man kept storing up his house and, and all this kind of stuff and, and everything. How the man kept storing up his house and, and all this kind of stuff and, and everything and, and, and he kept building bigger bars and everything and just. Poor, just full of greed. I'm telling you. And. The Lord told him he was gonna die. His soul was gonna be quiet in him. And that's what, you know, all that, 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 that he had built up and, and stored up. He didn't get to enjoy none of that. And a lot of times that happens to people unaware. They thinking that they've really been blessed. The Lord blessed me with all this and all that. Okay, the Lord might have been blessing you in the beginning, but what did you do with your blessing? We have to be careful. Because that blessing that God gives, we can turn it in and make it turn into greed because. We forget about God and we so focused on getting more and more and more, being blessed, 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 as they say. And it's not necessarily being blessed anymore. Because you are sitting there harboring stuff that somebody else is in need of, that you can help them out with. So we have to be very careful. I, I had, um. Remember telling her cousin, she was talking about, all she was bragging about all the hours she was making and how the Lord was blessing her with all this money and everything. And I told her, I said, well. One thing about it, you have to be careful. With all that the God's giving you, what you doing with it in return, in all these hours you getting too. You know, you want to be around to enjoy the money as well as to help somebody else out. I ain't thinking about that God blessing me. You don't know what you talking about. And the guest, the next week. The company closed down. She got laid off. So then she didn't have no, you know, didn't have, have it. So we had to be careful, just like you said, as fast as we get it, we can be taken away. God give it and God can take it away. And some of that God did not give. She got it out of, out of just, just being greedy. She saw the money was coming in when God blessed her, when she was in need and she asked the Lord to bless her. But then, once God started blessing her, she turned around. And it, it, it became greed and full of greed. And just missed, and missed out, you know, the blessing was just. Gone to waste because she did not do what she was supposed to be doing. Amen. We got to remember when God blesses us, he gives, we give back to him as well. And not just, uh, you know, people talking about giving to church, we give back to him by blessing other people. The word of God said you'd have done unto me when you'd have did it to the least of my members. So. We gotta remember that. We can't be sitting back just being greedy, getting all we can and storing up and everything and stuff. Just the canker words don't eat it up. That's all I have to say.
Amen, amen. But, um, see, I believe sometimes blessings could be a curse. You call it blessing, it could be a curse. I mean, do you think when we gain riches sometime, we out there in the streets hustling? Um, still ain't selling drugs and stuff. Be rich, be rich and.
That ain't a blessing, right? That, that, that ain't a blessing.
That's not a blessing, that's what I'm saying. That's not a blessing. But I'm saying, when I was in the street, there's some people falling asleep. They were blessed. That's not a blessing. That's a curse. Because.
Even like I said, in the beginning, it was her blessing, but it's how you use your blessing and what you do with your, your, your blessing. It then, you can make it a curse. You understand?
Yes, I understand. Man, uh, Elder Martin? Yeah, I'm your elder.
God bless. God bless. I just wanted to. I just wanted to throw this out here. It just, uh, the Lord put it on my mind. Talking. When we had stimulus checks come out. And. Everybody misused that money. Did nobody take the opportunity to really save or put it to good use? They took the blessing. Now that was a blessing. But everyone, especially the ones who had children. They had the opportunity to bank the money. To put it up and put it to good use and give God back some of the money that they had was given. And they took the opportunity to misuse. The blessing. What I'm trying to say, when God does give us. Things, we misuse. We don't put it to proper use. And the first thing God always tells us to give back to him, what he give to us. And so we have an opportunity. That's when, that's when things fall apart and people that has riches don't. Be, be able to enjoy those things because they don't took their first priority, put it in the back priority, put it in the back. Instead of putting it where it's supposed to go. So I just wanted to put that out there when I, uh, when I was just saying, wanted to talk. About how God had blessed. Individuals with the stimulus money. You know, especially those who were doing, those was unemployed, the ones that was unemployed, they got real big chunks of money. I saw one young man, one young man, he took all that money, put it into a car. Put it into a car. And next thing you know, the car got towed up. So we have, we have to be careful. How we use our blessings when we get them. We can't misuse them because if we misuse them, it'll be a long time for you to get blessings in ways that you, that God would like to bless you. Amen.
Amen, amen. Yeah, I've, I've seen that a lot with the stimulus check. You know, I've seen a lot of new cars on the road that got destroyed in a couple of days. But you jumped on, you, you spending that money falsely that your blessing was and you, you ain't got no food in the house, you barely could pay rent, but you out there buying these cars and tearing them up. Party and everything. Now you struggling praying to God that you need money for your home or feed your kids, buy sneakers and shoes, but you took that stimulus money and you partying. Buy these cars and then you, then you tear everything up. You spinning all up down. You back to square one.
Back to square one. Amen.
Amen.
Can I say something real quick, ministers? I just want to ask one question because I want it on the recording and it's for everyone in the virtual classroom. Raise your hand and out there, social media, God bless you. Thank you for recording, but it go for you too. Raise your hand and, uh. If you have. Already given, because we've been advertised, we've been partnered with Saint Jude. Raise your hand for how many times you have, uh, donated to the children since we're talking about giving to the least of them, at least five dollars. That go for the classroom too. And if not, then you, and then the question is, why?
Yeah, I can raise my hand here. I say I have a good one. Your hands up. Our minds up too, Ole Miss, uh. Uh.
Class back on you. I, I turn it back to you. I just threw that question out there because since we're talking about finances. And since we're talking about money and since we're talking about blessings and all of you been giving stories about. And Minister Rose gave her testimony about her cousin and, and Elder Marsh. Okay. So we're talking about how money and stimulus checks and all this and all that. Right now, children, Saint Jude children. Need our support. So how many times anybody in the classroom and social media out there, have you at least given five dollars just to give it out the. Out the goodness because we want cheerful givers. Goodness of your heart. To help the children and their parents. Uh, remember God is listening. Don't even lie because I can go over there and pull the port and see if your name on there. And if your name, even if you gave anonymously, I can still find out because we're partnered with Saint Jude.
Hmm. I have not given yet, but. I did notice that they have a event coming up.
Oh, praise God.
To walk in Indianapolis.
Oh, really?
I thought about going to the event with my family and maybe race.
Praise God. Thank you so much, Sister Lou, for your answer.
Amen.
And me clearly pastor ain't pressing nobody. It's just we talking about the topic of giving. And first of all, giving to. A child shouldn't even be no pressure. But if it's a pressure, this, then some of you need to look at your heart. And you giving, because if you're struggling giving away a piece of paper. And some of y'all struggling giving away your time too. And some of you don't keep your word. When you tell someone you're going to do something, you don't do it. Some of you don't even keep your word to God. You say yes to him and then all of a sudden something distract you and then all of a sudden. You done turned around and you done jumped doing something for people and you forgot your yes to God.
Yeah.
All of us need work in that area because giving have many branches. So if you're stingy with a piece of paper, then don't be upset. Don't catch your attitude when God holds back. Or he don't answers your prayer or your blessing. I mean, he don't answers, I'm sorry, he don't, he doesn't bless you or answers your prayer in particular areas. Because if you can't let, if you can't open your hand one hand fully to God and then you want to keep another closed fist, that's not fair because both of his hands is always open to us. Because he still get, he still wakes us up each and every day. Some of you are still in your right state of mind. You can still use your limbs. Your mouth still work. Remember there's always someone out there in a worse condition than you.
Yeah.
So you need to check your heart, check the motive of your heart in the area of giving. Are you really giving in your time, talent and treasures? And when some of you give your time, the time that you give, you waste, some, some of y'all wasted. When you're in the presence of people. Because you're not giving your, or you're not speaking, or you're not showing any of the fruits of the spirit that's beneficial for yourself or the person. So that means that's wasted time. Your talent, when it comes time to be around certain people that need your gift. You don't say anything or you don't give out, or you don't speak of encouragement. So that's a waste of the talent. And then now we're talking about your money. Some of you sting. Because if you stingy on a little level. Don't, I, I suggest you don't even ask God, nothing on no big level. Until you get the little level straight first. Amen. Out there, social media for real. Don't even sit up here asking God for houses, cars, money, Austin or less, and you can't even get five dollars. That means if you can't get five dollars, you ain't paying no card note. On time. Then you done screwed your credit out. You ain't paying no house note on time. Because then you're going to be juggling bills like, oh, and especially if you have any habits. Let's, let's get real and get deep down within the behind the scenes stuff before you start opening your mouth, ready to say stuff. About, yeah, we should give and your heart should be like this. Put the mirror to you to make sure in certain areas that God has told you to give to the least of us, have you been willing to give? Do you sit back and think and say, you know what? I got this cup of coffee. Let me go online. I'm part, you know, I come to soldiers. I kind of this Bible study attentionist stuff. Let me partner with them soon, help the children. Remember, you ain't, you ain't giving it to pastor. You ain't giving it to Apostle Robin or Minister Rose or Minister Isaiah. It's going to the kids. We can back our stuff up. And if I seem a little irritable about it, because I am, I'm in a season of irritable about it because I'm tired of people saying they let it low. They let the children, here's an opportunity to prove it. And y'all just gave scripture about it. You can't even get to the least of it. And remember, we're trying to reach our goal. Now, if you're not giving, that means you're not even spreading the word about it either. You ain't even telling nobody else. If you may not had a five dollars right there, you know about ten people. Because you know people on your job, you know people in your neighborhood, you know whatever, and you can say, hey. Come and join Soldiers on Fire for Christ and partner with them. They got this link. They trying to raise a million dollars. The minimum is five dollars. You ain't even spreading the word. Just something to think about. I'm back behind me. Take it away, Minister Isaiah.
Amen. I mean, that, that, that's exactly what we talking about. Thank you, Ole Miss, for that, you know. We. I guess we all could be guilty of that, but that also brings us back to the, the people with the money that runs the street and the people that are rose brung up. We give to everything else, but we don't give to, don't give anything to the needy. I ain't talking about, I ain't even the needies on the street. The people that, we all know some people that are struggling out here. We don't even do that. So that came right on time. So yeah, we ought to take self-examination ourselves and looking to Mary, you know, every time we go shopping and go in the movies, go to. That what you do, parties, uh, buy new cars, all these new, new furniture in your house and stuff, but you, but we all know somebody who needed a little help. You know, we don't extend a hand out to help them. Now, everybody that we know that need help ain't bad people. We got some good people that fallen, you know? And we don't try to get them a hand up here. Amen. Elder Buds, you had hand up?
Yes, I'd really like to.
Oh, he's been up for a while.
Okay, I'm looking too far to the right.
For my heart out there. Uh. Since I've been with the Lord. In my life. He gives us a desire of our heart to give. And I know in my heart. I examined myself and I try to pull out what I don't. And that is what's exciting for me. I have never really been a person that has been greedy. That wants to hold on to something or think I gotta have something, you know, I got stuff around here that I've had for years. And I don't even use it anymore. You know, it's just there. But the idea is. Examine your heart exactly. Because I know inside my heart, I give what I can give and I do what I can do. Because I love the Lord with all my hearts. And I wish I could do more than what I do. And I, God's taking care of me. I praise God for that, my health and everything. I, I'm grateful for everything. That the Lord God has given me. And I find myself, the more that I get in the word. The more that I allow God to be in my heart. That he opens up ways that I can do things that I normally couldn't. Like I said, I have a friend in another country. And I love him to pieces. And I'd do anything for that guy. And right now, he's got a, he's got some things going on. And there's things he can do and there's things he can't do. And he has a heart after God. And when you have a heart after God, God will show you. In, in your heart, you'll feel convicted. I have no conviction in my heart that I have not, you know, given because. I'm willing to give anything I can give. If I have ten dollars in my wallet and I do see somebody on the street. Honestly, I give it to, I just do it. I'm not bragging. I'm not bragging. Because it says where your treasure is, there is your heart. And I'm, my heart's after God. I'm seeking God all the time with my heart. And he knows I give in a second for anything I can do to help people. And so I examine myself, yes, to see that I'm in the faith. I praise God for Soldiers on Fire for Christ. And what we're doing, I have grown immensely, immensely in just a few months compared to years. And I thank God for Soldiers on Fire for Christ. Because I am on fire for Christ. I love him with all my heart. And if tomorrow everything was gone, I would have Christ. I would start again. And I praise God for the part because the world's getting wicked, man. And I'm telling you what, the stronger you get in Christ, you will stand. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you for that, brother.
Thank you, Jesus.
Minister Rose?
Amen. I got. Uh, three things I, I wanted to put on real quick, touch on. Uh, first of all. Now the marshal was saying about so many people got their stimulus check and they, they, um. Threw it away, didn't really do anything. I thank God for being obedient and listening to the voice of God because when we get our stimulus checks. The Lord spoke to me and told me. To save. And I start saving. And I can remember, uh, right after that, that time that. The, um, the place that I was staying in, I was leasing from this lady. She decided to sell the duplex. And I had to move because the new owner was renovating. And it was doubling, over doubling. It was more than twice the amount of the rent. And I, I remember, uh, praying with Pastor Teresa. I had called her and she told me to start packing just like I was moving. Like I had already had somewhere to go. And I thank and praise God because. If I had done obeying the Lord months ago and started saving them, I wouldn't be in the house that I am today. I don't know where I'd be. I'd probably be homeless. Because everything that's during the time when rent has started, first started going sky high and there was no way. That I would have been able to afford any of that rent. But I thank and praise God that God blessed me. And not only did he, he, he blessed me. That I had almost just the, the, almost the amount I was lacking. that I had almost just the, the, almost the amount I was lacking by a thousand dollars for getting everything done. Because once you get the, I, I moved into a mobile home. And once you get the mobile home, you got to have the registration fee and all that kind of stuff and go down there and get your little sticker and stuff like that. I was lacking that much mu- the money for that. But I thank God that the Lord began to bless people and they began to pour into me. And it made me think about the scripture. Give and it shall be given unto you. Press down, shaking together, running over with me and give unto your bosom. The Lord had blessed me to know, to do that, to help people. I can remember when I had gotten some insurance money and it, uh, a couple of people in my family had asked me for money. One of them dodged me for years before I just totally just said, tell her. I had to take a, send her a message and tell her, if you worried about me asking you for the money, you can, I'm not gonna ask you for the money. I said, I told her, I let her know, I'm not gonna let some money keep me out of heaven. Then my sister-in-law did the same thing. She pa- she paid me half of the money and then she stopped paying. And then she, she said, oh, I thought I, um, gave you the money. I said, no, you didn't give me all of it. I said, I got it wrote down here in my book. You gave me such and such much, da, da, da. I don't remember, but I didn't know at the time though, she was, um, was, you know, forgetting what they have, uh, what is it? Uh, 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 what is it? All, it's not all time, it's whatever, dementia, onset of dementia, this early onset of dementia. And I, I, and I said her, I told her, I said, don't worry about it. Just forget we had this conversation. But then I found out later that she forgot, she really thought she did pay me. Or either she didn't even remember she paid us or she was just saying something, but you know, if I had to act a fool and everything like that, that would have been more my witness and everything with her. But I thank and praise God that the Lord had blessed me to be able to be a blessing to somebody else regardless if I get it back or not. And then I was thinking about another time, like Elda Marshall was talking about how people waste when they get money. When my mom passed away, we got, all of us, my siblings got the insurance and then, um, some of my nephews, they got, and, and my niece, then they got this, this insurance policy and everything. Came through and we all got so much money. One particular sister, she blew her money, but then won't come back and beg me for money. And I, I can remember even my aunt said, she said, I'm so proud of you. She said, you took that insurance money and you did something. I, everything in my house was brand new. I, from the bedroom down to the kitchen. I bought every piece of furniture was brand new. And that, you know, and I thank God that the Lord had, had blessed me to be able to do that, to have new furniture in my house. Because I, you know, I used to always get like, some, somebody gave me or, or something, or I went to the discount store and got this and all that. But I was able to go into Ashley Furniture and buy at different stores. I got Ashley Furniture, Thomas Hill and, and, and all the motherfuckers, I was able to get stuff. But I thank and praise God that because I knew that I, I had to give to the Lord as well. And I, everybody always talking about paying tithes here and pay, yeah, the Lord ought to pay tithes. And yes, I did at the time because paid tithes. But my thing is, when you bless others and you see others that's in need, that, that goes to show you that God, that money is not your God. When you willing to open that fist, because so, so many times people fists are closed. So much so that they can't even receive no blessing from the Lord. But once you begin to open that fist and begin to give to others, God will make sure you will always have, and he will give back to you as you give. Amen.
Amen, amen. Uh, Pastor Teresa, your hand up?
Uh, no, but I, you won't, if I could say something on it. You know, I mean, the last poor Minister Rose wrapped it up. Like I said, if you keep your hand, you know, I mean, let's, we, we gotta, we got to get real men and women of God. Those of you who say, who you've been walking with God for five years, is all, it's all, we at the end times, all it's time to stop playing games and be real with yourself and be real with your walk. You know, let's, we know the word. You got the word in front of you. You say you study the word. Okay, you study, meditate on the word. That would seem to be your problem while your actions not aligning up with all that reading and meditation. See what I'm, that's, see what I'm saying? Wow, what's going on? See, there's a disconnect. If you up here reading the Bible every day like you say, and you talking to God, whatever, and there is no action, there is no fruit of the Spirit. There is nothing, you're not listening to the unction of the Holy Spirit to be a blessing to someone, there is a disconnect. Or either you're just straight, you're just a straight liar, a child of the devil. We gotta keep it real. We got to keep it real. And that's the, that's a legitimate question. Why should God bless you? And you won't, you, uh, won't even give up a piece of paper. But like Minister Rose said, if you, if you start feeling stingy because of a piece of paper, that lets you know that's your God. You don't love God. That piece of paper is your God. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Um, we do it closed out, but if anybody got anything else to say before we leave out, um.
I want to say this real quick that I left out too. If I can remember, wait.
Social media, woo, we on a recording line. That's his family. Don't pay no mind.
I, I get it back.
Amen. So, um, thank you, social media. Um, you coming back, Rose, with that? Oh, good.
I don't think so. She ain't bringing it back tonight.
Not right now, right? Amen, amen. So, um, thank you, everybody on social media for, um, being with us and, uh, pray hope that everybody got something out of this year, you know. I just thank Pastor Teresa for reminding us about our givings and, uh, um, Minister Rose is going to say that, tell us about, thank, um, Jude, when she do an announcement, just be mindful, we all need to be, be giving, you know what I'm saying? Because, um, we waste more money than we give, you know, so. I just want everybody to be mindful of that, you know, and that too. I just hope everybody learns something out of this day, you know, that they got something out of, you know, be mindful in our own personal spending with our families. Ain't giving to others in need, but just be mindful how we deal with our money and how we dealing with it in the way God wants us to deal with it, you know, in our giving. Being ourself or, or in our finance. Amen. Uh, Mr. Sam, I see you up there.
Yeah, I, I was, uh, uh, I was working, but I was still hearing everybody's conversation. And, uh, I'm, I'm done working now so I can actually hear what the Spirit is saying. I was dealing with this all week long. It's not the problem that we don't want to give. And it's not the problem that we, we want something from God. It's just a lot of people have took the meaning of give into actually pimping guys' people into a form of witchcraft and, 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 and trying to draw on their kindness. It's a lot of spiritual wickedness. Because people like pulling on people kind heart. And I, and I understand you, Pastor Teresa, because neither beats God giving. He gives it to us. He's a man that owns a thousand count on heal. So everything that he give to us, we should freely give to someone else. But when you know had people prostituting and pimping you for so long, you be cautious. And sometimes you can miss your blessing, but if you had a spirit of God in you, God will tell you, give. A lot of people don't hear the spirit. So like you said, they gonna over, override the spirit. One thing about God, I learned, you can't beat him, give. You can't. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you.
That's true. You can't beat him because to prove that, look at King David. I keep telling y'all that part of the, the story of his life where he always, every time he, he, um, got down the storehouse, he was giving away, giving away. Unless you know somebody else was bringing a king, something else. I think that was their little private, you know, because he called him a friend, their private little connection. And David loved he, he was, I mean, he was just giving that stuff away. And he was like, okay, this is enough for me to live on. And God will smile and bless him again. So yes, you right with that statement. You can't, you can't, we can't outbeat God and giving during, you, you just can't. You just can't.
Anybody else have anything to say for you, um, you bow? Um, Minister Rose, you gonna do the announcement? And Elder Bud, you can pray us out after that, okay? Amen.
Our announcements are as follows. Join the Women of Soldiers on Fire for Christ tomorrow. At 1:00 PM, we will have our women's panel discussion. And if you would like to be a part of our, um, panel discussion, see myself or, um, Pastor Teresa or Apostle Robin and, and, uh, make sure you give either of us your email so we can make sure you can get the link to be a part of this panel discussion. It's going to be a great one. Amen. Also, on tomorrow night, we will not be having Bible study. Amen. But we will have Bible study next Saturday at 7:00 PM. Amen. And join us next Thursday at 7:00 PM for our, um, prayer conference call. And for all these announcements, you can, can go to any one of our, our pages, any of the administrative team pages or either the group page, and you can find the dates and the times. Also, we would like to invite you this Tuesday to come to our meet and greet at 7:00 PM. Amen. And if you, again, if you would like to be a part of this class, of this, our, our meet and greet, well, it is kind of like a class because we have an open forum discussion. We have just a good talk, good fellowship. We don't have no, um, no structure. We don't have no scriptures and all this like we have on tonight. But you just come with your questions. Come with your smile and get ready to enjoy us. Amen. Also, I would like to just let you know, as Pastor Teresa had been talking about the Saint Jude Foundation, we have partnered with Saint Jude in order to raise one million dollars. This is what the mouth the Lord has laid on the heart for us to raise. And we can do this. It may sound like a whole lot, but it's not a lot at all. What if all of us would team together and listen to the voice of the Lord? We can do this. Amen. These children, they didn't ask for sickness or this illness or anything that's going on and neither did their parents. But help, give. Amen. And your money is going to a worthy cause. We're not getting any of this money. Man, this money goes directly to Saint Jude Foundation. And they will send you an email thanking you for the amount that you have given. You can go to any one of our pages on Facebook and you will see, most of us have pitched it to the top of our pages. And there you will see the little boy in the green T-shirt. Just scroll to the bottom and push the link and it'll take you straight to the, to the, uh, website of Saint Jude. And Saint, Saint Jude give those suggested amounts. And like it was said, you can give five dollars. And you know what's on there too? If you forget to give, they got on there where you can give it, you can pick to give it monthly. And that's what I chose. I chose to give it monthly to take it out. So that's, you had no, you know, no excuse to say, oh, I forgot. Saint Jude already fixed it up and they let you know, we thank you for your amount once they take it out. So you know, we asking you to just, just ask the Lord to lead you in how to give. Amen. How much to give. You know, five dollars may be a minimum amount, but you can give that and you can even give more than they suggested amount. And we just thank you and we praise you. These have been our announcements. Please govern yourselves accordingly. May God bless you.
Amen. Thank you, um, mister. Uh, um, Elder Bud, you can take us out.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you today for the freedom that we have in America compared to a lot of countries today. Lord, we thank you that you're holding back the tide that's going to wipe things out. Lord, we thank you that there are people out there, Lord, that are lost and going to hell. Lord, we pray that these, these schools, these lessons and these teachings, that God open up our hearts and let you come inside and be able to examine our hearts. Lord, we thank you for your word that brings life to our minds, our souls and spirits. Lord, I thank you for what you've done for me today greatly. I'm thankful for each and every person that's on these, these groups, Lord God. And I pray that, Lord, let it be inside our hearts as you thank in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Glory in your holy name. Amen.
It's recorded by mistake. Amen. Thank you, everyone.